Okay, I'm good. I'm Mayor Glaze and we're gonna call this meeting to order. It is June twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and it is five, five-ten P M. Um, so we'll do roll call first. Mayor Pro-Tam, Mayor Pro-Tam, Villa Lovas.
Here.
Councilmember McGovern.
Here.
Councilmember Styler. Councilmember McClan.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And I'm Mayor Glaze. So if we could rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then to the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
And then for the invocation, please. Dear gracious heavenly father, thank you, Lord, for this beautiful little city of Martindale. And Lord God, thank you for your gift of salvation to each and every one of us. Lord God, we just ask for your guidance tonight as we go forward with the business of the city. And we just ask that you give us discernment in all of our decisions. In Jesus's name, amen.
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 Okay, any public comments?
Did you put, did you put those up on?
Yeah. Okay, so we'll move on to our first item. Um, it's about the towing services. Um, we had put out a, a request, an R F P for, for companies to, that want to work for the city of Martindale. So I'm gonna let Adrian talk about this.
Um, hi, everyone. So let me get to the agenda item on the top screen.
Yes.
One second, guys.
I was doing that. So this is in relation to our parking enforcement. We put out R F P. We struggled to get responses. Uh, finally got some responses and looking for a motion this evening on approving, um, Mayor I to finalize a contract agreement with one of these companies. However, the, um, both proposals appear to be under the same ownership group, which is somewhat strange. And the terms, um, don't line up exactly with what we had in our requirements. They're very close, but they're a little different. So we'd wanna have some negotiation with them. But that's what we're open to, if you want to summarize.
Right. Um, so, so Salsedo Recker is a company under Southwest Towing Services. In the instance of Southwest, they would call Salsedo. And then if Salsedo doesn't, can't get anyone to service a, a vehicle that needs to be towed, they'll call the next company. So I believe they have two or three companies under their belt. Salsedo is your own. I believe Salsedo wants to become more established on their own. So they submitted a detailed, um, scope of services as opposed to Southwest. Services only submitted their certifications. If there's any questions about, um, what Salsedo submitted, I welcome counsel to ask away. It did, I believe it's worth mentioning that Salsedo Towing did offer to do routine inspections, place their own signs. They have three regular, light to medium-sized, uh, towing vehicles. They probably can't tow away any extra-large boats or semi-trucks, but they could definitely tow away your, your day-to-day average vehicle. So if there's any questions at the council, I'd ask.
You can talk to them about potentially towing away trailers.
Yes, they do mention trailers. As long as it's less than twenty-six thousand pounds.
Oh, it's white.
Okay. That's that's their weight limit. Anything above twenty-six thousand pounds, they can do. However, that's Sals- that's Salsedo, we can do it. Um, Southwest says that they have one heavy-duty, um, about it.
What's the name of Southwest?
Southwest, uh,
Towing Service?
Towing Service. Right. So Salsedo does mention that they've been around for fifty years. And as I mentioned, Southwest, these towing services has not mentioned how long they've been in business, who their customer base is, um, and so forth.
Okay, I think I'm, maybe I'm ahead of myself, but I have stressed this multiple times that, uh, citizens of Martindale are people that pay taxes. Uh, they have free use to our parks. And my worst nightmare would be for one of our local citizens to be towed off. That's my number. And that we would all have egg on our face. So I've, I've suggested, or maybe Salsedo's, or maybe y'all could talk to them about some kind of a sticker to put on their windshield. Whereas that sticker's on that windshield, like, if that sticker's there, there, you don't tow them, you don't charge them. So that's, that's the only thing that, that I have concerns about.
Conceptually, we could, you could select a towing service, either of the options, and ask staff and the mayor to, um, go ahead and renegotiate some of the terms, including the, to verify that the location of, or the residencies of towing of vehicles.
Well, I, I know we talked.
Either provider makes reference to that, um, protection for Martindale residents.
Yeah, we, we have to negotiate in on the term sheet.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know they talked about with the app, you can put the app in, you're, and they can check the, the, with your app and the, the license plate and all that. But I know how things go. And I'd like to have a backup plan, because I, that's, that, that's my worst nightmare. A sort of a poor family up here gets towed off, it's two-hundred-and-fifty bucks. It, it won't be good. So.
Talking about fees, um, it appears that Salsedo has cheaper rates than Southwest. Um, they only do a.
What's the tow fee? Yeah, what's the tow fee for Salsedo then? Twenty-one dollars? And then is it, do they charge per mile?
They said that they didn't, although I'd like to, I'd like for them to, to really mention that on a.
Yeah, I, I read through this. They didn't say that, but I know, I saw the fee was cheaper, but usually they charge a
Correct.
connection fee, if you will.
Right.
And then they charge a per mile.
Correct.
And then there's the daily charge. Salsedo was a little bit cheaper than Southwest.
Southwest does explicitly mention that they will charge for the mileage and all these et cetera fees. I don't believe that Salsedo may have had a comprehensive, um, estimate, cost estimate sheet for the services that are performed. They don't even mention their towing and impound services, and it's twenty-one dollars per day.
For regular vehicle, yeah.
So.
I saw the, yeah, twenty-one oh-three was the charge per day, but the, to tow a vehicle cannot be as inexpensive as twenty-one oh-three.
So again, that's where that renegotiation comes into.
And that, yeah, that, is that, is that the charge they're gonna charge the client, or is that, you know, I mean, what's our take on that?
So they, Salsedo does mention that they will do the billing for the city. So they would collect the fees, and if the city adopts any ordinances that has any surcharges on that, they would enforce those as well.
But that twenty-one dollar is just a storage fee.
And towing.
No, they, they listed it as a towing fee.
Kind of like a, looking doesn't look right. Comp fee, so.
I thought something up there said one-hundred-and-fifty dollars at the beginning of the fees. Some, somewhere I saw one-fifty on that list where you had the list of.
We bring a, a different copy up here, which.
You're, yeah. So from an accident scene, S M P D is one-fifty. That's what I think.
So is that for?
That's that.
Yeah, this is Salsedo. So here's that other list.
Those are San Marcos P D fees.
Right. So this, this is what, they, an example from San Marcos, which I mentioned is council stops a, an additional rate list. Um, they would enforce it, which is mentioned in their, um, initial proposal.
So it would be one-fifty, or what is that?
Oh, wait, notice, notice how this says San Marcos P D. Um, they, they use a template from San Marcos that they have a contract under.
Yeah, they're showing you what they, what they, you know, what we could use as a bench. Obviously, we need to compare that against what our costs would be, what, what the city's gonna make. You know, there's obviously a, a profit center for the city.
If, if the city so chooses to accept that approach.
And where is their storage lot?
Um, San Marcos, I believe. And then they mentioned they have different locations. And they can only hold ve- thirty vehicles, um.
It's on Grove. Salsedo's on Grove Street, two eleven Grove Street.
Here says, uh, impound alert is a large enough space for thirty vehicles. Now, they do mention they haul it away after thirty days to a larger facility.
Yeah.
Although I didn't see a exclusive mention of where those locations are.
That was my next question. Is when is it available for pickup for the client?
When?
What, what are their hours for pickup? So if someone gets towed, are they only available Monday through Friday from nine?
Something about four P M.
You probably looked up Salsedo Recker's area, because I'll tell you on Google.
Yeah, so here says that their office hours are four P M.
Nine to four P M, Monday through Friday.
Now.
Close holidays and weekends.
I'm still looking at the fees.
That's for, that's for their office.
That's for their offers. They also mentioned thirty, three sixty-five.
Um. Seems like if you got it towed on a Saturday, that you would like to pick it up on a Saturday if possible, or perhaps on a Sunday. But is this telling us that they'll only let people retrieve their vehicles on Monday through Friday from nine to four?
That's not both.
That's pretty common.
It is?
Oh, yeah.
Well, they towed mine twenty-one years ago.
Yeah, they. You learn quickly, didn't you?
I know exactly where that impound is at.
Nice people.
It sounds like we still have a few unanswered questions and concerns, and that it would be difficult to take an action on this, uh.
Well, all we're doing is, all we're proposing is let them go and start negotiating with, with Sals- is that correct?
It sounds like you guys are leaning towards Salsedo.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, I, with the fees, I'm so confused on the way it words. It says twenty-one oh-three each day and an impound fee of twenty-one oh-three, one pound fee. So it's twenty-two oh-six, or forty-two oh-six.
Right. So if, if it takes you five days to pick up the vehicle, um, does twenty-one dollars keep racking up?
So, okay.
So some of the rate structures are set by the licensing, um, agency at the state, or what the maximums are. So as long as it complies with, with that, I don't know if we'd have.
So clarify, all we're doing today is giving you guys permission to negotiate with Salsedo's. They will.
Exclusively.
And then we will come up with a final vote.
You'll have to, you'll have to approve the final contract.
Okay, so they will do that with that. We have an issue with fees or whatever, then we can do that when we do the final contract. Okay.
Uh, if, if there's a problem with Salsedo, and the only reason I'm mentioning so much about Salsedo towing wrecker services is because they have a more of a detailed submission than Southwest. Southwest only submitted certifications and their licenses and their inventory. They did not mention who are their other clients, uh, how long they've been in business.
They already do business here in Martindale.
I mean, starting here.
Oh, just a second back.
That's, they have three vehicles. So from page twenty-two is where Southwest Towing submission begins. And it shows their certification, another license.
And then they started two-fifty.
Rate sheet. Oh, no, I'm sorry, that was inventory.
Yeah.
Here's their agreement with the county.
These were basically services, two-fifty to pick up the vehicle for less than ten thousand pounds.
Two-fifty?
That's pretty standard.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't really see it with Salsedo's. That's why I was asking.
Correct.
I asked that question. It really put it on there. It's like the one thing they didn't.
This is the.
Like the only thing, you know, it's kind of like.
So if they come to Martindale and tow, and all those Salsedo trucks are, say, busy in San Marcos Towing, and a Southwest trucks comes, even though it's under the same envelope, would then the rate structure of Southwest then apply to that towing?
So, uh, it's inverse. So Salsedo works under Southwest. And so Southwest issues a ticket that, hey, go, Salsedo, go pick up the vehicle. No, we're busy. We have, we have no vehicles able to go to Allen Bay's Park. They'll ask whoever the other rotation company is. And Southwest does mention that they won't add an additional surcharge for that rotation of, uh, companies.
And that's in writing?
Yes.
They'll put it all in one location?
I think it's a father-son deal.
Yeah.
It's a, I think, I think Southwest is, is Tomas Salsedo. And then there's an L L C for the other that's owned by Miguel Salsedo. And, uh, South, Southwest Towing was, that was formed in two thousand sixteen. But there's nothing filed with the state for, um, Salsedo Wrecker Services. But they're probably just a, a D B A in East County.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, do a tow, a towing service request for proposals, an R F P to allow our city managers and the mayor to negotiate a contract. Let's all say those slash Southwest. Should I add Southwest?
Sure.
Okay.
So Southwest or Salsedo's?
Both.
If, if, if it's as, um, described.
Yeah.
If, if it's L L C under Southwest, I mean, do business as, um, Salsedo's. I, I'm not sure who we would contract with in that case.
I mean, what you, what you wanna do, I think, is, is it, I mean, they're operating, I think the sun, it looks, and this is just me guessing from what I've looked up, but, you know, say, look, I mean, if we're gonna, we're in a contract exclusively with you, just give us one rate, and then whoever comes out, probably each of that way.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion?
I just think that it would be better just to say Salsedo or Southwest, because if they're gonna be under it any, anyway. But I think, like, saying, yes, we're gonna do it with both, that's not clear, that's not clear.
Well, let's start, just start the negotiation. So really.
Yeah, yeah, just.
They're gonna talk to Salsedo or, I guess they just needed approval.
Let me read it, how it is on the agenda.
The, the reason I think it's a good idea is, is because if you, let me, let's hypothetically say that the city contracts with, with, um, Salsedo. And Salsedo runs out of trucks. What, 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 what you wanna, I mean, it's, it's all going back to the same place. It's, it's, it's going to be either Tom Salsedo's place or Mike Salsedo's place. But they're, they operate out of the same location. And one of them's gonna come out. And, and so by saying, hey, guys, you're operating out of the same place. If we haul whoever sends out a truck, that's, that's fine, but we just want one consistent rate. But I mean, I, I think it's, it's effectively one of the same.
So do I need to change my motion to?
No, I think you're talking.
Do you like it is?
Okay.
What are generally the requirements of our city to get into contractual agreements with companies? Is it normally to where you just say there's this one and let's go with it? Or does it have to be a competitive process where you have more than one company?
We did a competitive process under, over three thousand dollars, less than fifty thousand dollars. We at least have to go through an informal, uh, bid process. We actually did a formal bid process. We posted it on our website. We put notices in the newspaper. We've even reached out to multiple companies, um, directly asking them to submit proposals, which is how we received this one. So we've, we've gone through all the competitive requirements that were, that we need to. And as long as the rates are under the limits set by the state regulatory agency, it really doesn't impact us too much. Um, where you wanna see value benefits are response times, the lot, the, you know, the vehicles, the capacity, those, some of those, um, intangibles that, um, would really differentiate one service from another. Beyond assuming the rates are equal under the maximum state.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. Okay. The next item. I'm not sure. Okay, I'll just go ahead and read it. Consider approving an award of a towing service contract.
Two.
Well, that's what I thought we had already done. Okay, good deal. I didn't think we were gonna award a contract to either one. Okay. Um, we'll move on to the emergency services district number five. So this is something that, um, the Caldwell County is proposing because the city of Lockhart and the city of Luling both are providing ambulance service to the whole county. And so here in Martindale, we first would call Lockhart, and then we would call Luling, and then we would call San Marcos until we could get an ambulance here in Martindale. Um, so all they're actually asking for right now is for the city of Martindale to support their efforts to come up with a new emergency services district that would fund ambulance service. So we have an emergency service district that does fire protection. That's what R E S D three does here. They don't do ambulance. In fact, they pay some tax money, uh, to, to Lockhart to have that service provided. So this is actually, I feel, in our best interest to support this effort. The county, in going to the county commissioners court, they are, are expecting that they could be as much as one and a half million dollars in debt by next year if they don't come up with some additional funding. And so this, this could help the entire county. They would then, um, propose putting ambulances in the far reaches of the county on both sides, like in Uland and in Martindale. You know, Luling would already have something. And, uh, so that's what I'm asking for. If you notice on the, on your iPads, that, that's all they're asking for, is our support. They're not asking for any money.
They're gonna put this on the ballot, right?
Yes, it would be on the ballot. So we still have plenty of time to think about it if we don't wanna support it. But I, I would like to see the city support.
So we can't, they can't put it on the ballot with, well, they want the city support.
I think they can put it on the ballot if they don't get our support, but.
It would obviously be.
Yeah, I think it would be better if we gave them our support.
I, I wanted to ask, so who, where does the ambulance come from that is always going to the river every weekend? Where does that ambulance come from?
It's a private, it's here. Um, so they have the firemen here. They have a contract with, uh, the tubing industries. And so that's a private ambulance that they have on-site that they pay for. The tubing industries pay for.
So the tubing industries pay for that ambulance.
Yep.
That's right off.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm confused, to say the least. Um, what, what does affect the city besides us getting ambulances?
Uh, more taxes, because whenever you hear the word district, that does mean.
Just we have an idea of what that would look like for our citizens then, or?
Bill, do you know how much property tax increase is gonna be?
That would probably be set by the county.
No idea.
I don't think we would know.
So basically, it's, it shows up property tax.
Yeah.
It would be another line item on your.
Yeah.
Do we know how much?
Very small percentage. I, I looked it up and I, I'd be lying if I said anything right now, so. But it was a small percentage, but still.
It's for the whole, the whole county would pay for it. It wouldn't be just Martindale. It's the whole county.
So, so how much we, how much are our taxes for the fire department? What do we? Do we know?
I didn't look that up.
And then there, we're still doing the one, the percentage, correct, from the, from the tax going to the E S D here? To, I mean, to the.
Yeah.
Fire department?
Yeah, I think it's like a quarter of a percent.
Quarter percent, yeah.
I guess my question is, would the response time be quicker?
Yes, if we had an ambulance closer, yes.
It could be, it could be a life or death situation.
So right now, then, you could call the ambulance, like I had to call an ambulance. I drove myself, because it's faster than me calling, you know, getting a name, it's out here. But we're, we're pulling from Lockhart. Like a drive from Lockhart, thirteen, twelve, thirteen miles.
So even though we will be paying this out of our property tax, then individuals that go in the ambulance would also have to pay for it per trip out of their insurance or out of.
I'm not sure how that works.
There's additional charges.
Probably, yeah.
But the goal is eventually is hopefully house one of the ambulances at the new fires.
So where would they house this?
And they're building.
Hopefully at the new fire station.
They, they are building a bay to house an ambulance.
So right now, would they house that ambulance in Martindale? Would it be?
I can answer that one-hundred percent. There's the possibility. Because they, when they do start building the fire station, they're building a bay for an ambulance.
I think it makes sense just because of the, not building that we have rolling through this area too. So you might as well get ahead of the curve and not have to have somebody die because we didn't.
We'll make a motion this, like a.
Motion specialist.
Without me. Uh, all right, I'll make a motion to approve consenting to certain, uh, to creation of the proposed Caldwell County Emergency Service District number five.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Why don't you move, why don't you move over here?
He's not comfortable. He didn't wanna be around anybody.
No, we were gonna squish him.
You worried about?
Squishing him in the corner.
Are you, are you worried about COVID or something? You worried about COVID?
Oh, man. They just told me to stay over here. Then I said, don't call me further.
We said, if you don't wanna be squished in the corner, you can sit there.
Can I sit over, could I sit over here too?
No.
We might put you in the corner.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to our last topic tonight, to the, uh, to our guest, Bill Calderon, and on the topic of the TURS, the Economic Development Workshop.
Yeah.
So this is now a workshop. We're not gonna be making any decisions tonight.
Yeah, so to give some context, as, as Bill gets himself ready, the developer that Bill represents is looking to, um, do a, um, large infrastructure project for renewable energy solar panel farm, uh, near the city. And they're asked us to consider creating a tax increment reinvestment zone, um, along with other actions. And so, um, also, their goal, their request was to have something approved by the end of July. I don't know if we'll be able to satisfy that request, but we are hoping, um, to get feedback from city council tonight on whether and how to proceed. The next step, as he will explain, will include public hearings and, and other items. This is an opportunity for city council to ask any questions that you have about the project, about the process. And that way, we all go home tonight with a feeling like we have a full and complete understanding of, of what's being asked of the city. And, um, we'll return at a future city council meeting, uh, to make a vote on, um, proceeding with the public hearing, which would be the next logical step after night, um, at the July sixth. Um, I think that's the next regularly scheduled council meeting. We'll have a, a vote at that point. But tonight, it's a workshop, it's an opportunity to ask questions. And, um, hopefully by the time we leave here tonight, you'll have, like I said, a full, complete understanding of what's being proposed and what's being asked of us. Bill?
Thank you. In, in, in both cities, this is the line for terms. Believe it, I, I've been to, when I was working for the city of Houston, council members would literally go like, this is. this is foreign, when they didn't want to participate. It was very odd. Thank you. Thank you, Matt, for your time. I've had multiple meetings, all I hate to do is to reproduct people's staff. And based on the last meeting that I had with Jared, Adrian, and Mayor Blais, the recommendation was that we come before you, so we have an opportunity to talk about the tool, how it works, what it takes to get it set up and all of that. And as, as well as talk about other related matters that would, that would ultimately impact how use of the TERS would ultimately be as I want here. And at Jared's request, I put together what I would call a very basic step process in this PowerPoint. I understand that all of these documents were sent out to you guys, so I'm not sure how much has already been reviewed, how slow or how fast I should go. So please tell me if it's too slow, speed up. But the, the first, the first panel in the, in the PowerPoint basically is just a list of the steps. We can go ahead and go to that.
We do this.
There we go.
Much better.
Yeah, next, next slide. There you go. And again, it's, it's a, you know, point A to point C. Generally, this, this process, including the public notification period, is anywhere from thirty to forty-five days. And about a third of that period is, is related to council authorizing the publication. And then the time that it takes to get it in the paper. You have to have, you have to have a minimum seven day period. And so most of the time, or at least a third of the times, you're really eating up just waiting for that so that the public is noticed. But these are the essential steps. And if we can go ahead and go to the next slide. Per the statute, there is a requirement, anytime you do a TERS, that you have a hearing. And so the public has an opportunity to participate. In order to do it legally, you've got to put it in a paper and have at least seven days of notification before council holds the hearing. And it has to be in a paper of general circulation and provide the details of when and where the hearing is going to take place. Do all those things, then you're legally to go ahead and hold a hearing. The next step is obviously the hearing itself. And typically, at that step, what happens is that the council actually considers and discusses what's known as the preliminary plan for the TERS. The statute requires anytime a TERS be created, that a preliminary plan be drafted and, and used as the basis to discuss merits of and benefits of using the tool. And that document basically is kind of what's focused on during the hearing, because it lays, it lays out pretty much everything that the reinvestment zone will do. Hearing is open, to the extent there's any public comments, that's when they will be received. I have done almost sixty of these in different jurisdictions. And I, I can only recall one hearing where there were negative comments. And out of those sixty, probably only three hearings where there were actually public comments at all. Generally, we don't get them, but we don't know what the flavor might be in Martindale. In any event, that, that, the, the, the presentation on the, on the project plan is made. Public has an opportunity to participate at that time, and then council closes. Depending on the, the, the nature of the project and the comfort of council, it is possible on that same agenda to load an ordinance to create after the hearing is closed, or to wait until the next agenda, or depending on how things go into hearing. One, actually two that I've, that I've been working on in South Texas in both instances, the zones were created right after the hearing was closed, because everybody was in favor and there wasn't any opposition to it. And that's, and that's usually the way, the way these go. But in the creation action itself, there is an ordinance that's considered by council. The ordinance sets forth where the zone is, what the, what the life of the zone is. And there's a needs and bounds description or GIS description of the boundaries. So you have a, a guide that the appraisal district can then use to go ahead and code all of the accounts within the boundaries of that TERS. The ordinance also appoints a board of directors. The, the statute that governs TERSes for cities and counties specifies that they have to be managed by a board of directors. It's appointed by council. There's no, there is a maximum number of fifteen. Typically, depending on, on the complexity of, of the zone and where it's created, our practice generally has been recommend anywhere from five to seven members. Typically, and the vast majority of these TERS, of TERSes that are created are created by cities. And so the city typically has the lion's share of the board. If it's a five-member board, it would typically be four city. And then one open for, for a county. Seven member, it would again be six city, one for county. On occasion, you'll see two for county where the county says, we'd really like to have a little bit more representation. But the reason for keeping it five to seven is that it, it enables the conduct of business achievable by form of either three or four, depending on the size of the, of the chosen. I don't know if you all ever have problems with form, but you know, my experience has been any given year, if you have ten meetings, you may lose two because somebody couldn't make it or accident. Smaller, smaller board, the easier it is to do this. And usually, after the reinvestment zone is created, there's a consideration of the development agreement. The agreement basically sets forth what it is that the reinvestment zone would provide and provide to the developer in terms of financial assistance to make that project more financially feasible. And I'll point out, we can really get into the detail, well, we'll get into the detail in a minute. But almost always, development agreement, the, the, the critical and most important part of that agreement is the budget, because the budget sets forth what it is ultimately that the developer is going to spend and what it is that he's going to get, he or she is going to get paid back from the TERS. And ninety-nine percent of the time, that budget is identical to the budget in the project plan, because the plan document is really the bible. It's the thing that governs what the TERS can do. And so when you actually approve the plan document, effectively what you're doing is deciding what goes into the reimbursement. The agreement itself is just the facility that formalizes reimbursement.
I had a question about the creation of the zone. And you said the ratio was four city, one county, six city or one county. In, in our case, this land in question would be in the ETJ first. And then would it have to be, how long would it have to be incorporated within the city limits before the TERS zone with the formulation of the city component be a zone of the city?
As soon as annexation occurs, whichever way that happens, it becomes that the city can participate in. It is a zone of the city, even if it's in the ETJ.
Do you have to be inside the city limits in order to create the TERS?
In order for, in order for the TERS to benefit from the city stream of revenue, yes. Because.
You mentioned that before. You need to annex or provide a corridor to get to this land, because right now it's not connected, right?
That is correct. And so in addition to the, the creation process for us, one of the, one of the hurdles that we'll obviously have to, to address is how, how to work through the process of getting ourselves adjacent to your boundaries so that we can then petition the annex.
And the vice morning?
Either that or, yeah, you know, the likelihood is great. And or easements. There's, there's, there's one development that you all are familiar with. We've had discussions with Adrian, connected us with him. And there's, we haven't taken it very far, because one of them is getting number one that this, there would be a reason to have that conversation in earnest. But they understand that we're interested in either purchase of an easement and or some acreage that would basically connect us from our current southern land, southern boundary line to the city's boundary on, on highway eight.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
And then, and then there's an approval of agreement for, there's also on this page, because we had a discussion about whether GCI would be willing to essentially advance fund on behalf of the city of Martindale dollars so that there would be a full dollars that you could have to pay for legal counsel's review of the documents.
That's, that's my question. I, I see section one. The developer, developer shall advance up to a max, maximum $10,000. The money. So my question is to our attorney, is $10,000 sufficient for this process?
It'd be a deposit that would have, if we ran out, we'd ask for more.
It says, that's what, it does say that, but how complicated is? I just, I guess I'm just wondering the cost, you know, all this stuff.
It's like a retainer of.
Yeah, but then, so then my question is, so we, we run out of money. And so how complicated is it to get it, to get more money or that? It says, city will notify the developer, the cost channel describes section to exceed or expected to exceed 10,000. Upon notification by the city that calls the section to exceeding 10,000, city and developer agree to modify this agreement to increase the amount of money. So what is that? I mean, how complicated does that?
Not, not, not at all, to the extent that 10,000, I, I think 10,000 is probably more than enough. But to the extent that it might take another two or three, all we have to do is be notified. We prepare a simple amendment to the agreement, approve it, and hand it to you.
Do you agree?
I mean, is it hypothetically possible? Sure. I, I can envision scenarios where it's less. I can envision scenarios where it's double that. I mean, it just, it just depends how much time it takes. Yeah.
So you say, do you think 10,000 is reasonable? Does it need to be more?
It, it, it could be. I mean, look, I it, it's, it's tough to answer a question on what something is going to cost and to actually get into.
There's a lot of unknowns here.
Yeah.
So I guess, so my question is rephrased. So do you think, in your experience, that $10,000, is that, is that sufficient to start the discussion?
To, to, to start the discussion, yes. There's very few things, very, very few matters that I undertake that, that cost less than $10,000. I mean, there's, I think you've mentioned thirteen. Is that, is that sufficient? I mean, the, the, the answer is maybe. How many, how many conversations are made? How many meetings are made? How many, how many issues are raised?
So I guess my question again, and, and a question. So should we, should it be increased to 15,000 or 12,000 instead of 10,000? Or is that, we don't really know at this point.
But your experience is ten is usually a, a nice starting point, you've obviously.
Yeah, and, and, and I say that on the basis of, of our, you know, our practice being essentially to prepare virtually all the documents that you can consider. So there's not, there's not initial drafting that your council would have to take, but rather just a review of what we've brought. We'll do the ordinances for the, for the creation, the ordinances for the, the resolution for the eligibility, the ordinance for the approval of the development agreement, the ordinance for the county or local agreement. We'll actually draft the county and their local. I mean, virtually, we're, we're giving you everything that, that has to be reviewed.
I guess I'll ask a question to you, your experience with doing these. What, what's the low end to high end range, I mean, for attorney costs as far as the state absorbs that we'll have to absorb, of your experience with this?
Usually, usually, you know, and, and that's kind of a hard question, kind of. You know, I understand what legal counsel is wrestling with, he's, he's not seeing these documents. But it kind of depends. Some cities have some pretty high-powered guys that sit there and charge you $800 an hour to do what they're doing. Sometimes it seems they go a little bit slower when you do it. It just, you know, it depends. But I started with ten, because I really do firmly believe that that's probably more than adequate. I don't know that you would need more than fifteen to twenty powers to, to accomplish what we need to.
I guess my point is, I, I just want to make sure we're not open bag. That's, I mean, I, I want to make sure our taxpayers do not have to, to, you know, if we go above ten, all of a sudden you'd eat, you'd eat ten more and there's an issue. And, you know, I just don't want the city to be responsible or required to put additional funds up front, you know?
Understood. I mean, if, if it'll make everybody feel comfortable, we can add two to it now and then amend if we need two or three.
I would think, I would, city manager, what do you think?
I think that the language is sufficient to at least get us started to know how big the problem is going to be. And we can adjust once we have a, a better understanding of. After we start this process, we'll have a good grasp of if there's going to be complicating issues or not. If there's not a lot of complicating issues, then probably tends enough. If it becomes a, a lot of complicating issues and drafting, redrafting, councils talk, or the developer talk to our council to negotiate certain terms, then, then that's where you're going to have costs. But it's enough to get us started.
Hey, I'm happy with that. You are, but you know what's going to happen? If we go over that, you're going to hear from me again, so.
Well, they.
That's, that's all. That's all.
We would work to have the deposit adjusted.
Okay.
But there is the clause in there to, to increase the threshold amount of 10,000 if, if need, need be. There, that is written into the clause.
Well, I saw that. Okay.
And, and our commitment is to make sure cities is basically not responsible for that cost.
Okay.
In any event, I, I added that last bullet on this page, because in the case of Martindale, that document would also have to be some group survey that would, were ready to, to, to make sure that costs aren't de-cut. If you go to step four, once the reinvestment zone is created, the next step typically is to have that board of directors meet. There's usually some perfunctory kinds of organizational things that have to happen at that zone. Typically, when council appoints the board, they'll appoint a chairperson. And then the board itself elects the vice chair and the secretary. And so those things would have to happen. There is also the oath of office, which is kind of the standard thing that the, the state of Texas requires these days for these quasi-governmental bodies. And once the, the, those actions have been taken by the board, which typically take about 10 minutes, then really their first order of business, if they're not familiar with it, would be to brief them on what's in the plan. But if they are familiar with it, then to simply have a, a, a presentation on what, if anything, is suggested or needs to be changed in the preliminary to take it to final. And that, and then if there's no amendments or the amendments have already been prepared based on the law of the city, then the board would approve the, the plan in final form. For the statute, it's got to come from the TERS board to the city so that the city can then consider it. And so after that TERS board, there would have to be an item on your next or a future agenda that would bring that plan back to you guys so that you could approve it at this, at this form and this level. We would also anticipate at that time approval of the development reimbursement agreement. And here, there is, there is no statutory guide. Sometimes the agreement is proved, is approved specifically at council and the TERS just accepts it with no. accepts it with no action. Sometimes the TERS board actually considers the agreement and then kicks it to council for finalization. In some instances, the local government corporations that we'll get to in a second are empowered to approve those, those kinds of agreements by city council and they can be approved at that level and that's good enough. Based on my discussion with Jared, I think what we're intent on doing is either two-stepping it with TERS board and then to you guys, or just bring it to council and have you approve it. But like I said earlier, you know, other than what I would call kind of standard formatted language relative, developer does this, city does that, these are the, these are the obligations of developers, the timeline and, and the budget. I mean, budget is essentially what really is the meat of that because that's what defines what the TERS is ultimately going to mean to the developer in terms of reimbursement.
So everything up to that point is basically in draft, except for the creation of the board. Once the board's created, that's, that's something that's done, it's not draft. But what the city is evaluating up to that point is draft. The TERS board, after the TERS is formed and the TERS board meets, what makes sense is that they, they would review that draft, endorse it for, for city council's approval. That, that'd be the recommended approach that, that would have for, for the step.
And in, in the ordinance, it says how long the created board is meeting with those specific members and how long that board exists for?
A, a board would, would exist as long as the TERS exists. The, the term of office would be set by city council, I believe, unless it's already in statute.
Statute requires two-year terms and what we, what we suggest is odd numbers serve for one year, even if it's for two, that way you have an, an appointment every year of board members or a reappointment, whatever the case is. And what we also discussed, we logically, that maybe council would serve that up, which is also something you could do. And which kind of expedites the issue of TERS board, you know, doing one thing and the city council will approve it because by the time you get to that step, you've already affected. So there's some advantages to it. Any questions then?
Who is LGC?
Local Government Corporation. One of the things that, that we, we had also suggested to mayor and staff is that we use for the reinvestment zone, same methodology that we, that we have used tried and true that works very effectively across the state of Texas, something that we actually developed when I was at the city of Houston. And it, it is creation or actually council authorization to, to submit an application to the secretary of state for them to create a local government corporation. The application is actually an online thing. Once they get it, it takes them about three weeks to issue a certificate which says here's your LGC. But you can't really do anything with it until you give it powers. And so in order for us to get that step down, what we ask the council to do is adopt a resolution saying we consent to its creation. That way we have that and can submit that with the application to the secretary of state so that they know the local jurisdiction is on board with, with Houston.
With the, with the council.
The advantage of having a local government corporation or some other layer is when it comes to debt service and, and other things that would be done under the local government corporation instead of the city. So it's a, it's a way to divide risk and liabilities in some ways.
It insulates, it insulates the city for, for debt. But the issue of debt really is, I mean, we're talking four years, you know, like before we even have a serious discussion about that because you've got to have value, you've got to have that, you've got to have value, taxes coming into the pot and then enough taxes at some point to justify going through the process of a debt, a bond. And that, you know, typically in TERS is, is going to be a best case scenario of four years, more likely scenario of five. Solar farm, because it does value so fast, it might actually be a four-year thing because the expenditures are substantial. You know, you, you know, from, from the beginning of phase, of the phase until the end of the phase, you're looking at $200 million. And so that'll show up on rolls in three years.
So what sort of things are the council then talking about during the course of that three to four years? If they're waiting to start to receive monies or how it might be spent? I mean, what kind of dialogue is going on then during that first three years?
What I anticipate is that there'll be a couple, there'll be a couple of critical steps at creation. Once, you know, the, the first would be dealing with the plan document and getting the, the development agreement approved. We also have, assuming that they will participate, and we, we haven't had that conversation with them yet because we wanted to make sure that Martinville is on board, we, we have to have a conversation with the county about their participation. And if they agree to participate, then there would be an interlocal agreement approved by you guys and by them that plugs them in. After that, there are things that would come to the TERS board would be, I would say, bi-monthly or quarterly updates on what's happening on the development, what's, what's going to be triggered in, in the, in the next quarter so that at any point in time, no one's in the dark relative what's happening within the TERS. As far as actual approvals, once you get past the interlocal, unless there's a, a need to modify the plan or do something that, that wasn't contemplated, where you'd have to amend documents, there really isn't another action that the TERS or the council will take until time comes to, to do a dispersment. And so we're talking probably two years.
So, so typically, you, with your, on your previous projects, there is an interlocal agreement between the county and the city. Is that pretty typical on most projects?
Yes.
Because they're both taxing entities, both of you asking for a reduction.
Like, like Houston, you had.
They both have to agree, they both have to agree to the tax reduction.
So they're, they're taxing entity, the county.
And we're, we're what? We're what, 40% of the total tax base roughly?
Yeah, the lion's shares, if the county were to participate, would come from.
What happens if the county doesn't participate?
What happens is that it puts, it, it, it makes all that much more important are getting into the city so that we can use the partnership that we have with the city essentially to fund the project costs. The, the preliminary plan document that I've set up and the estimated revenues and the, the model that I've prepared based on everything that is contemplated would be built in, on the solar farm in both phase, I'm calling it phase two and phase three since the first phase is actually up to road. Is based on an estimated 225 or some million dollars worth of hardware that is actually put out there per phase. And so the model that, the, the model for revenue is going to reflect pretty substantial increases in value attributable to that by year one and then again in year two because of how quickly those dollars are spent. Value, and so what's going to happen, what's, what's happening in the model is that you actually see, and this is a tax code-driven deal. The assets that the, that the company puts out there are, are mandated to depreciate and, and will depreciate over, over that initial 10-year period with a floor of 20%. And so my, my, my model actually takes it 10% a year after a full build-out and caps, floors it. Would be at, at, at 20% at, at year 10 and basically keeps it static at that point. Land alternatively is going to be doing this. And so the model actually reflects a, a, a diminution of, of asset value and an increase in land value. And the product of that for both phases, at 50%, the Martin's current tax rate would generate 138 million dollars in taxable value times two. 138 would be for the TERS as at our proposal, 138 would come into your general.
So your base, this is phases two and three. Where's phase one?
It's in, in the city of Ullums ETJ.
Where?
In the city of Ullums ETJ. It's.
So how much land are you actually going to make in the solar farm? You acquired 2,800 acres or you're in the, have you, have you closed on the property yet?
No, closing is scheduled for later this year.
So you've got 2,800 acres. How much is phase two and phase three of that 2,800 are you actually going to use for the solar?
About 2,000.
You've got 800 acres. I think you alluded to the corridor along 142 is still in play.
That is contemplated will be a mixed-use commercial development. I have modeled into the revenue analysis, some basic assumptions relative, what we sampled, what will be there as well as included in the project plan, infrastructure costs at 21,000 an acre, over that 800 acres. And so, but we're not going to get into the business of actually land planning and engineering what that land will require in terms of infrastructure until we've taken care of the solar farm piece. There has been some discussion about maybe advancing the, the timeline for that, but, but really the focus for, for GCI is going to be building up the farm and then dealing with what happens on the commercial end, which, you know, we are, I think, pretty much going to be right across the street from where smart is going to be happening. And I don't know how much, if any, of that might drive what happens on the commercial side, but the, the, the plan document has some preliminary assumptions built into it that in all likelihood, once we get to that point, I, I'm, I'm anticipating that we'll probably have to come back and ask council to make some adjustments to it based on where we are at that point in time, that would, that would provide, provide for more accurate estimates of value increase as well as more accurate engineered estimates of the infrastructure that would be required based on what's going to be built.
And I just, I just want to make sure that, so our property taxes above and beyond our base tax value will go into, to the tiers, correct?
Correct. And 50% of your tax, in other words, we'll take 100% of your tax rate, apply it to the value that generates a number that we split in half. Half goes into the TERS, the other half comes into the general.
That's not your property, that is their property, you understand?
Yes, but that still affects our budget whenever we're budgeting either for fire, for police, for, you know, different things.
That's, that's the advantage of it. We, we would be making more, we would get more revenue with less clients to service.
But in how many years? What would the years be?
We're proposing 30 years.
So that, that's even if the tiers is still in existence by then?
Yeah, what, that's a great question. Luke, that was one of the questions I had. What happens after 30 years, this agreement is null and void? What is the exit strategy after 30 years of these?
Actually, the, we anticipate that it'll be less than that. There's a, there's, and again, it, it, it's a function of, of whether we come to council and ask for bonds to be sold or not, because the, you know, and, and by the way, the, the reason for the 30-year deal is that there is a, there's a delay in how TERSes work. If we, if, if we create tonight, let's just say, we, we get the zone created tonight and, and when GCI goes out and in the last two quarters of the year does 100 million dollars worth of work out there, well, your appraisal district will pick up that 100 million dollars plus whatever increase they, they, they do with the land based on the transaction, which will go up a lot. They'll get that in January of next year. It's not certified until September of next year, roughly. And then the tax bills go out Thanksgiving, money comes in attributable to everything that happened late, later this year by the first quarter and 22.5. So there's almost two years with the delay based on, on how the, the system works. So we're not going to see, you know, any significant dollars into the pot, like I said, probably until year four or year five. And at that point in time, based on cost of money, how the financing is ultimately played out, there's going to be a, a, a discussion with GCI and the city about, do we do a bond or not? Or do we do a note? And here's some options so that we understand costs. If we were to do a bond at that point in time, we're, we're say, you know, beginning year five with the TERS, typical bonds are 20-year amortizations. So you have to have, you know, at least 30 years to do that 20-year. Some TERSes that I've created contemplated a 15-year, a, a 15-year term with a 10-year amortization. And, and in one instance, I've actually done two of those, and in one of those, we did it just as, as it played out and paid it out two years in advance because the values came in a lot higher. And in another instance, when the developer was not at the door, we said, we don't really want to do the bond because if we do, it's going to add another block of years to this term when we can pay you out based on the dollars that are coming in in another eight years. And so those, you know, we don't know exactly what those numbers look like today and so we expect that we would have that conversation. But from the, from the debt perspective, probably the most important thing to, to consider is that the, you know, creating the local government corporation so you have the mechanism to do the debt should you do it, insulates the city. But the agreement that empowers that LGC has language in it that says they can't do bonds, they can't do notes, they can't do any of that kind of thing without council's consent. So at, you know, at that point in time, if it's being contemplated, there's going to be a lot of, let's, a lot of information cobbled together and brought to you so that you can see where the money, where the money's coming from and what size tranches, how much is going to be sold, what proceeds are going to be used for, what the debt is going to cost. You have all of that information available to you well in the events of, of going to market on anything. And it's ultimately up to the council to decide, we're comfortable or not.
You didn't answer the question, I think, that I was trying to get to, what happens in 30 years in this?
Thank you.
We have 30 years, the solar farm is outdated or is it non-functional or?
I don't know the question to that. Robert, are you on?
Yes. Yes, so we're going to, what we, we're going to end up doing is developing a long-term land, land use plan. So, you know, basically what we, we already have, already in the process of starting the master plan and development. After the, after the solar farm is decommissioned, land use plan will basically use, utilize for a commercial. We could either refurbish one or, or both of the facilities at that point and re, you know, commission them again and recommission them again by basically replacing the entire facility. That's going to be a part of our, our long-term land use plan. We just haven't.
So just to confirm, Robert, so the, the standard lifespan of a solar farm is 30 years?
It's 30 years, yes. It's 30 years.
We're, and we've talked about it and nobody knows for sure exactly how it'll play out because the technology's advancing literally as, as we're working through this. Things that had to be replaced eight, 10 years ago, you know, by the sixth year are now lasting a lot. And, and, and that will continue to play. So it's, it's.
Efficient.
The, the lifespan may last longer than that, but to your question specifically, since your turn, your, your ordinance says we're going for 30 years, if that, you know, and my preliminary plan numbers are what I would call hyper-conservative, 138 million that I mentioned, that would be the TERS's piece. I honestly, I do that on purpose because I don't want to over-project. I think it's very likely that those numbers would be substantially more healthy. Variable is, is if the county comes in, county revenue comes in and you have two streams, then what that means is that the project costs and the plan, which are set at 199 million right now, would be paid off a lot faster. And if, and once they're paid off, then you, the city has the option. What do we do with this, with this sum? Do we, you know, do we add territory to it? Do we add projects to it? You know, and, and if it's, if it, if you get to that point in year 21? Uh, you know, and and if it's, if it, if you get to that point in year twenty-one, and you have another nine years of county participation. Uh, it might be a really good idea to amend the plan and and then get their consent and keep it going so that you can jointly pay for things. That you might not otherwise. But statutorily, by operation of law, if 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 you're, if your project plan is a two-hundred-million-dollar project plan. And you get paid off by year twenty-one, you don't want to do anything else with it, it shuts down automatically. And then at that point, the following year, everything that was a fifty-fifty split now comes a hundred percent into the city's general fund. Sorry, it took so long to answer.
No, you, you answered the question.
I had a technical question, but maybe I'll wait until after you do all the steps of the presentation.
Sure. Uh, the last, I think the last bullet on on number four was approve a management contractor's own administration. Uh, that's typical for special purpose districts, just so that you have somebody who knows things announced and can help guide the the board and and the city on doing that. And then on step five, uh, since the board has approved the project plan, uh, it comes back to you guys. You approve it, it's final at that point. One thing I would like to note is that final doesn't mean you can't change it. Uh, these things are living, breathing mechanisms. Um, your, when when a reinvestment zone is created. If there's logic to shrinking it, you can do that. If there's logic to increasing its size, you also have that legal capacity. Uh, anytime you do something like that, you you have to go back through the hearing process. So that the public again has an opportunity to weigh in. Uh, the more critical discussions are, uh, you know, just ensuring that. That there's funding to add projects to it and 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 be able to to get those paid for. And those are usually all those, at that point, you also usually have inner inner jurisdictional discussions. Uh, because I'm pretty certain if the county agreement is like most I've seen, if if the county, uh, Caldwell County decides to participate. Their agreement's probably going to say, uh, we're good for this hundred and ninety-nine. You add anything to it. We're not in until you come to us and ask us to be in, which is reasonable. Otherwise, it would be a crap day. And so uh, the the plan will be approved uh uh by the board and involved you guys. Uh, there is, um. Once the local agreed, the local uh government corporation certificate is received. In order to empower it to to essentially implement the plan on the city's behalf, there's an agreement that has to be approved. By the TURS board, so you put one hat, by the redevelopment authority board, you put the other hat on and approve it. And then it comes back to you guys as council, and council finalizes that agreement. And and in that agreement, it basically sets forth the structure for how the city and the TURS LGC interact and and work with each other. Uh, the essentials are, you know, uh, the redevelopment authority is empowered to implement the plan on the city's behalf. Uh, do land assembly, uh, incur obligations and and do bonds with city consent, approve agreements. Uh, and essentially oversee the implementation of the TURS. In return, uh, what the city mandates that they get from the from the local government corporation are in annual budgets. So they they approve the budget at the LGC level, it comes to you, and it becomes actually part of your city budget because it's, it's a a component unit of the city. So it falls into your audit. Uh, they approve independent audits, so everything is completely transparent. There is no question about where the dollars have gone. Uh, and uh, and then just uh do, you know, what whatever would be mandated in terms of regular reports to the governing body. I guess in this case, if you all are the board, I don't know if we would necessarily need that, but uh, perhaps there might be a every. Third or every, every third year, every half year of development, uh, of a presentation on uh GCI on. What's next, that kind of thing. Um, and then, and then, and then, of course, the consideration of the county interlocal agreement. Uh, and at that point in time, once, if if the county indicates that there's consent, um, typically, uh. There is, you know, what I recommend is that that discussion not be just consulted for GCI and county, and then we bring it to you. It should be city and everybody at the table, so that there's no uh. No confusion about what each jurisdiction's doing, and there's an agreement between you guys, because I mean, literally, it's, it's, it's city-county. Uh, the, the, we typically take those agreements to the TURS board. TURS board, if it's in, if it's independent of the city, has an understanding of what's been agreed, and they might ratify it. It's not statutorily obligated. Uh, because the deal really is between the city. Uh, and then the, and then any last actions that would be taken in step six. Uh, if there's anything that hadn't been contemplated, that's, that's when it would be taken. No, that's essentially.
Step six, the, where annexation would would likely happen?
Um. Hopefully sooner than that, hopefully sooner than that, but uh, again, those, uh, I didn't really want to go down that path of having discussions. Uh, with uh, the developers on on eighty. Is there's no point to do that, we're not going to do this.
Yeah.
They're they're aware that that we're thinking about it. They didn't necessarily make any noises that they would be opposed. But I I really, I said, I'm just introducing the idea. I said, city connected me with you guys. I said, let me finish with the city. And so that's basically what we've left it with those guys. Um. The, um, I know that we've talked about the the funding agreement. Um, one thing that's important, um, that was also circulated, and this really. It's not part of the TURS creation, but it's a very significant element. Has to do with with the document, the HBL eighteen sixty-nine boroughs bill. This is not in, in this past legislature, it was one of the four.
You know where that got codified? You know, the.
Uh, it was codified uh September, in September of two years.
Yep. Did you, you have the reference of the section twenty-six of. Trick, local government code. Scroll up a little bit.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Pass by the house.
And.
Twenty-six point zero one two tax code?
Is it tax code or is it transportation?
Tax code. Yeah, tax code. And um, and this was, this one of of several amendments that have happened over time, but the. The significance of this is that, um, it's really an important point, one of the, one of the huge benefits for a jurisdiction using this tool. You know, under the, under current law, you're you're limited in how much revenue you can increase from one year to the next. You guys are subject to that too.
Sure.
Yes.
Uh, and um, I I believe you're capped at three and a half percent.
Yes.
I don't know if alleged, there was, the ledge was threatening in their special session that they would deal with a a bill that might increase that. Uh, and, you know, there are a lot of jurisdictions that were bitching, bitching the ledge to eliminate it because they're being choked to death. Uh, with increased services and decreased monies. Uh, Caldwell County, the judge told me four stories about how how much money they've lost over, over the last couple of years and and their tax rate has dropped. At the same time. One of the reasons this is important is that when you, when you do a reinvestment zone. And this won't matter to you until we annex in, but as soon as we annex in, it would be a huge issue, but this saves you from from the grief. Uh, the significance of the borough's clarification is that it flags very clearly. Uh, that any value created from project, projects located, located in a TURS or a TRIS, which is a transportation reinvestment zone. They weren't the same as TURSs, but they're created slightly differently, uh, is basically hidden. So, uh, as as you do on on an annual basis, let's say, you know, you create today. We we figure out a way to get into your city, we petition in, and we're in before the end of the year. And so anything that happens is now happening inside the city of of Martindale. You know, your, your budget is limited by what what it is today, plus another three and a half percent for the next budget. But if you have to account for the, you know, the hundred and fifty million dollars, it's it's going to be happening in the first year or so. That's going to kill you guys in terms of what you're able to do, because you can't. There's no way that you can take all of that value of the revenue from it and and deal with keeping your cap at three and a half without radically dropping your tax rate. Because of all of that value. Because of this clarification that is now uh codified in the, in the tax code, whatever we do out there is not counted.
It's a population, yeah.
It's it's basically, it's basically hidden. It does, it it it's not factored into the increase in value that you have to accomplish. You know, that you have to address as you do your budget and you do your whatever discussions and and decisions. Changes to your tax rate based on that increase. Uh, you know, that math game that you got to play to stay under the three and a half percent. It's not going to be complicated. Quite contrary, what we're going to be able to do is do this massive value increase over here. It doesn't factor into your budget, but you're going to get fifty percent of that revenue coming into your general fund anyway. And so it's going to solve, uh, for all intents and purposes, the struggles that you've been having financially. Uh, because you're going to have a huge in influx of dollars.
And what about the eight hundred acres? Is that going to still be, even though it's not going to be part of the solar farm, is that still going to be included in? So as long as you maintain ownership or development of that, that is still exempt from.
Everything, everything in the zone, so.
Every, everything. It's 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 not because it's.
It's it's really interesting, because uh, three and a half percent, basically, if your, if your property value is growing at more than three and a half percent, then you're capped. What's happening, as as Bill has explained, as he's looking through over the last five years, it's grown like fifteen, twenty percent.
Why not?
Yeah, so, um, as I'm sure most home homeowners in the city would know, property owners in the city would know, the, especially for land that that size. So if it continues at that rate of increase, and we're only kept at three and a half percent, it kind of defeats the math and the pay tables.
Yeah.
So it's exempt from, from that calculation. It helps them out, because it, it's more money going in the reinvestment zone. Helps us up, so there's more money coming in. Um, that, that exemption.
And the, you know, the, just from, um, another measure, I guess, another way to look at this is as to whether it's a good thing or a bad thing for the city. Uh, in economic development, generally, there's a measure of fif- anything above fifteen percent infusion of public dollars into the deal is considered. Getting to be too generous, usually the sweet spot is between ten and fifteen for most deals. Tax abatements, uh, uh, because of the sliding scale that most jurisdictions adopt, kind of automatically ends up somewhere between nine and eleven. Uh, and uh, based on on what we've, we've placed in in the preliminary plan at a hundred and ninety-nine. And anticipating a one-point-two to one-point-three billion dollar total capital, uh, capital investment on the solar farm, as well as the commercial. We're popping in right at about eleven percent of the, of the overall reimbursement versus contribution from the.
For things.
Just. So, um, where are the solar panels made? In the United States, or are they made overseas?
I believe all of that stuff is local. Robert, again, I'm going to kick that.
Yeah. Yes. So, um, first, phase two panel is going to be made in Thailand, but phase three, there'll be US-based.
Um, and then once after thirty years, then is that glass and metal? I mean, are the panels recycled, or are they go to landfill, or what?
No, the panels will be recyclable.
Um, and I asked before about the glare from the panels, uh, two thousand acres of solar panels. What type of type of sun glare does that create?
Because we have the game chang- uh, game chang- solar tracking system, uh, they will track the sun, and the tilt, the tilt angle will not. Not, will not, um, affect the glare, um, directly in 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 a, from a horizontal peripheral. Um, we just have to run our FAA checks to make sure that the glare does not affect any aircraft, so. And we don't that seriously.
Yeah, the panels are actually going to be going tracking the sun.
All of the sun. Yeah, they have them in, they have them in Vegas all over the place, outside of the Vegas Valley.
And and how high off the ground are the panels?
We're going to do our, we're doing our preliminary check, but you know, on the average, those panels will probably be seven feet off, you know.
And then you just do, uh, weed maintenance and and spraying and all that beneath the panels, or landscape cloth, or?
Yes, we say. Yeah, that's our operations and maintenance, um, contract. So we'll be performing, um, you know, scheduled and unscheduled maintenance. That includes any vegetation growth, control of any vegetation growth. Um, our environmental impact, our environmental impact assessment, or environmental phase one study. Uh, we're going to take a hard look at all of the, um, all of the species, whether it's, um, this plant or animal life to ensure that. You know, we have a plan to ensure that, um, any of the indigenous or any endangered species that's, follows on that list, they're maintained.
There, there are, there are some water retention areas on the property right now?
Uh, yes, there are. And and there'll, there'll probably be some minor modification of those to detain on site. Uh, and one of the conversations that we had, largely based on input from your, your foundation, Virginia?
Virginia.
Um, was a discussion about incorporating into the, into the land maintenance plan. Um, a strategy that essentially eliminates use of pesticides or anything that seeps into the groundwater. Coming up with green alternatives.
Native.
Native, yeah, so that, so that we don't create any problems that, you know, or exacerbate any problems that you currently have. So that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we also have a pollination plan as well, based on the environmental impact assessment. We'll have a pollination plan to ensure that, you know, the plant life. Or plant growth, uh, that is, that is indigenous to the property remains as well.
Well, I mean, so much of the land has already been cut and cleared. I mean, there's really nothing really native left, all this, I mean, there's some oaks, but I mean, from what I've seen. Not much is left. And so it would, it would seem to me that with the sloping of that land that slopes down all towards us, that. I mean, I'm hard pressed to think what vegetation is remaining, and that you would have to incorporate new vegetation to prevent erosion. That's all. I mean, it, I I've been watching that land being cut and cleared and burned, and it's just been scraped completely.
Yeah.
And fortunately, it hasn't rained much, but I I, I am concerned about the revegetation of two thousand a- acres and what. Kind of im- impact that has of us down downhill from this development.
Mm-hmm. And we're going to, we're going to, so when we perform our studies, before we put any show underground, we're going to perform a full study, you know, we're not, not in the business of, um. Developing these solar, solar arrays or these renewable energy projects at the expense of the local community and the, um, the actual, um, um, property. So, you know, whatever it takes, you know, we'll take our time, perform our studies. We have some of the best engineers. Um, the, in the United States working with us. And, um, you know, we're going to, our environmental aspect of the project, we take that very seriously. But any reports that we generate, we should be more than happy to share that with the, um, with the city. We all been.
So you have instances already of 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 vegetation or things that you've done in previous developments? That you have carved that out of a, or and and actual agreement instead of just saying you'll, you'll do this?
Yep, yep. So just, just, uh, just as an example, um, right down the road for Exodus one. You know, we've, um, we've established, we work directly with the Texas Department of Agriculture and the US Wildlife and Fisheries. Uh, we have a, um, danger species plan, a vegetation plan that we, um, you know, that we're going to implement, not only. Not only after the construction of the project, but during the actual construction as well. So, you know, um, these, these are methodical approaches. This is not us giving our word. It's a very scientific, methodical engineering design approach. How we develop these from environmental all the way down to the solar renewable aspect of it. Again, every, every report, every plan that we implement, it will be an open book to the community.
Okay, and the, let, there is, um, because this is a critical issue in this project, and I've, I've done this in a couple of others where the same same environment, same conditions essentially apply. We've added language in the development agreement that obligates, uh, the developer to perform, you know, uh, what I would call, uh, additional, uh, ac- actions in order to preserve environmental, you know, the environmental conditions that exist and not exacerbate anything by virtue of the development. And sometimes that's, uh, uh, treating detention in a different way. Uh, sometimes it's using a, a different kind of paper depending on what they're doing so that, so that there isn't, uh, uh, as much impervious cover and water sheet flowing waters, that kind of thing. It really depends on the, uh, on, on the, uh, the development. But we had already contemplated in the draft that I've begun preparing for the development reimbursement agreement, that there would be language related to environmental preservation. Which of course, you know, you guys will see in the extent that it's, it's, doesn't meet your comfort and will adjust as needed into a deal.
Jared, um, I had a question, like, as far as, like, for the city, with the projected amount of years or however long it takes, what is the total amount that is going to not be in our general fund because of this project?
Yeah, it'd be about a hundred and thirty-four million dollars total that the city would not be, um, receiving if this was completely privately invested, uh, funded and there was no, um, refinancing agreed.
That, that would not be in.
It basically what we're doing is, um, providing them a hundred and thirty-four million dollars, a hundred and thirty-seven million dollars of value back into their project through, um, taxes.
We're also collecting that much.
Well, we're also collecting it. In, in some ways, they're, they're creating the value, um, themselves. And then they're, they're being taxed on that value and then we're giving some of that value back. And this, this, because it's so self-contained, I, I think it makes sense. Um, if we're a larger, more diverse project where there's multiple people adding value and then taking value out. Um, I, I don't know if fifty percent would be the right number, but in this case, it, I think it makes, makes sense. Now, um, you always have to ask yourself, would the investment still be made without it? Is it feasible without it? Um, would it, would this be something that would be done regardless of of it? Because what you don't want to do is just hand out money just because it, it's being requested, right? Um, so that's, that's a value determination that the city's going to want to make. Um, if you have questions on that, I'd suggest asking Bill and and Robert, um, on those issues of what feasibility.
That leads me to my really, really good question I have is following the liability here and what the risks are. And why, if this is something that, you know, I mean, you come to us, and that's why it always comes to my head for some reason. Why isn't this popping up all over the state if this is such a lucrative situation for the, the entity, the county and the city? That's, I mean, that's my question. That's why I'm.
I can, I can, I can answer that. And, um, you know, first off, development and, you know, I don't like to talk about my peers, but, um, development, the renewable energy development community, um, we're not average developers. I'm just going to put that out there. No, um, we have public finance professionals on our team, we perform a Venice engineering. Then the financial models that we currently, that we currently have, we fashion is, this is the first, this is one that's in Caldwell County, is the first renewable energy project in the United States that's being executed in the auspices of a public private project. That being said, not just going to, um, the local bank and getting a power purchase agreement and then hoping for the best as far as financing, um, these projects. What we've done, we take a ground, our firm, the only firm, development firm in the renewable energy sector, is taking a gra- a grassroots approach. We work directly hand in hand with the, so with the, uh, with the local municipality, establishing, number one, the special purpose districts. Select only, or site selection, it's only in severely out of stress, new market tax credit deals. Then last, um, last but not least, we are partnered with a, uh, partner, we work hand in hand with the DOE on our, on our, um, on our aspect. So developers are pushing out, uh, that we are basically competing with. They have a very, a very dogmatic approach as it pertains to developing these projects. And they don't take a hard look at the local municipality and take a hard look at the, um, at the financial structure. It's a very simple approach where they're looking to basically go to get a project to a certain level and sell it off to another group for the project. Our stance, it's more of the hard way. No, we're taking the project, we're building only and operating these facilities and we're taking the time to build, you know, basically a community approach. And then last, you know, we, we brought our model, we presented this model that we're currently performing. The Department of Energy, we went to directly to the top, um, Director of State and Energy Community Programs. And this project, the way that we, we built Exodus One, it's been deemed as a model project that hits all, that it hits all the bills and lists what, and what projects should look like if we're looking to perform communities to the solar, or go hand in hand, um, projects that can go hand in hand with our, with inflation production. So, that's.
Robert, let me, uh, let me also add, I think the question really was, was more related to, correct me if I'm wrong, general use of TERS and 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 why cities doing versus why they shouldn't. Uh, you, you use the word liability. I, um, I learned how to do this stuff at the, at the City of Houston when, when I was running the Cities Economic Development Division. There was one zone that was, existed, it was petition created when I first started. By the time I left, I had done twenty. And, uh, and they were all different kinds of reinvestments and, and the, the, the net net from, from the jurisdiction's perspective about why this tool is such a good tool to use from, from, if you look at all of the things that the state of Texas allows you to do for economic development is that, number one, it is performance based. Uh, i- if you create it and 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 approve a plan that says, you know, you're, uh, you're eligible for two hundred million dollars of reimbursements. If the developer doesn't go out there and build it and create the value and pay taxes on that value, then the developer doesn't get any of that. They have to, they have to actually reform in order to, the city doesn't have to spend any money on this, uh, uh, at all. Uh, and so it truly is from an economic development perspective, one that, that it's like a magnet. You put it on the ground and what it does is it, it induces private capital to come in. Because if you do the deal inside there, you get the benefit of, of getting your infrastructure costs mitigated by virtue of the reimbursement potential. You know, we're, uh, we're looking at, uh, you know, substantial costs associated with, uh, with this project. And even at, uh, a nine percent return, uh, you know, is it as good as thirty? No, but, but part of the, part of the issue that we also have and one of the reasons why, very bluntly, our, our partnership with you guys is so important is that in Texas, you know, the, of late, the, the, the state leadership has eliminated, um, from the, the tools that are available to us, uh, access to anything that would mitigate school district taxes. And the school district tax for us is the same as it is for you guys, it's the lion's share. And it's a huge burden, you know, under, uh, prior to this last legislative session, we had three thirteen that we could use and we could apply for it, and if we got that benefit, pretty much zero out your school taxes. Uh, it's a hundred percent burden now. I mean, they literally took out all of the renewables. So that means, you know, the use of this tool for us helps all that much more in making the, the financials pencil out. It's tight, it's tight, but it's even tighter now. And so, uh, that's another, another element for us. But the, the, uh, the, the reason why it's, it's a real benefit to you guys is it doesn't cost you. Uh, you're, you know, uh, you get the benefit of drawing private capital. And as a result, you get the benefit of the, of the, uh, money into your general fund that wouldn't otherwise come in. And, um, and then on top of that, because of, uh, the boroughs bill, you also get to shelter all of that new value soon. So it doesn't affect your tax rate computations, but you get the added benefit of all of that additional revenue that comes in anyway. And so it really is a good tool to use. But, you know, from our perspective, uh, equally important to the, to the value of the finances is that we want and need the public partnership with you guys, not only be, not only for the dollars, but there's other stuff that's going to come up that we're going to bring, you know, bring to you in terms of, uh, 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 grant funding. Uh, some of that we anticipate is going to be a dual benefit, not only to our development, but to the city as well. And, you know, we need that kind of consensual cooperative relationship with you guys. Uh, and a lot of the grant, uh, programs, especially at the federal level, one of the boxes you got to check is, is there local participation? And, and, you know, if we, if we don't have it, that doesn't necessarily kill you. There are some programs that it will, just outright. If you don't have locals participating, you can't get the grant money. And so for that, from that perspective, it's, it's hugely important to us. But, you know, we value, we value the opportunity to do, to come do this and try to do it in a way that the state enables us to all work together.
Will we, will we be able to add additional properties or projects to the TERS and what would it look like to, to do that?
You can do it. Um, there is, in the case of Martindale, it kind of depends on decisions that you all make relative how you grow otherwise. Uh, there is, um, and at the creation phase, especially since we're outside of your tax and jurisdiction, it doesn't matter at all right now. But let's say we were all inside the city and we create this TERS. Um, even, even if we were inside, it wouldn't matter right now. But, uh, if you do an annexation, part of what you have to do by statute is determine at that point in time, how much of your tax base you're putting, you're putting inside the boundaries of either one or, or multiple reinvestment zones. And a, a city your size would be limited by fifty percent rule. Uh, you know, which you can't have more than fifty percent of your overall tax base inside the boundaries of a TERS.
So there's a number of properties?
It doesn't matter, properties, it's, it has to do with value. It doesn't matter, you know, it, it's, it's the, what it's worth in terms, let's say, you know, you have a, I don't know what it is, let's call it.
Calculations? You haven't kind, you haven't figured out what the rest of the value of the city is?
It doesn't matter at this point because we're outside. And so, and, and even if we were in, because you don't have any reinvestment zones, this, uh, uh, you know, the, uh, the issue of, uh, I, I take it back, we're doing. If we weren't, yeah, if we were inside the city, we, we would likely have to surgically draw the boundary to make sure that we excluded acreage to make sure that we didn't blow the top off of that fifty percent rule. I don't know what your tax base is now, but knowing what we're going to create out there, it's going to be, it's, it's going to be.
It'll be about three hundred percent of our tax base.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, and so again, answer to your question is, I don't know that you're going to be able to do more after this one. And unless what you do on other annexations and other growth, you know, other shifting of your boundary, how that shift affects your overall tax base. To the extent that, that we, we petition in and now we're part of your tax base, um, clearly, we're going to be the lion's share. But if you grow and you get another couple of projects that also do this, then conceivably, there might be a capacity to, uh, to do more. And, and, and the thing about annexations and creations is that it doesn't have to be contiguous. You could have a plot here and a plot here and a plot here, all part of the same reinvestment zone.
You don't have to border each other, the properties?
You, you used to be, used to be that way, and, and you'd see some gerrymandered boundaries.
I, I guess the question for Robert was, is this property picked because of the power line going through the property and the location between Austin and San Antonio because of the power grid? Be to be able to serve it, to be able to service, believe on it?
Yes.
Because of the growth and the potential flow, okay? And, and to find a piece of property that's rural in this area where it's fast development? Is that, is that kind of?
Yeah, most definitely.
I think it's just on all of those, yeah.
Yeah.
How are your dealings with the county going?
Um, we, we haven't, uh, uh, what we did, because the county on phase one basically said, we, we prefer to, uh, delay action on the abatement. They want to do a tax abatement up there, uh, uh, until you've closed on the phase one land. Because they didn't want to have multi-party, uh, us as a party and the owner as a party. They wanted it to be just the owner. And so we said, we'll have to just, let's just suspend and then we'll come back to you once that's, I, you know, I, I know the, Robert and the team. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Robert, I believe that the, the closing is now scheduled for the early part of September. Is that correct?
September eighth.
Yes, and so, uh.
So you have started.
So, so, so we'll go back to the county after that's done, uh, because we'll have met that requirement. As far as participation in this, we not, we not discussed that with them at all.
How big a tract of land is the one in Newland, if I can ask?
Twenty-one hundred acres. No, no, it's, it's eleven thirty-four.
It's, it's eleven thirty-four, yes.
So this will be the biggest jump, Robert?
Yes, yes, yeah, but, and, and because we're doing double.
All right, so, uh, I'm, I'm sorry to go back to this again.
No, it's okay.
If we go through steps one through six, everything looks fine and dandy. Business is up and going, this is years down the road, obviously, and it is a sales. Hopefully it doesn't. Who's liable? Is there any liability for the city?
No, and, and the, and here's why. When, when the, um, when you create the TERS, you also, the ordinance, I, I, forgive me, I didn't mention this. Language in the ordinance also, my state's law requires that you create a TERS fund. And, and so you have a place where the dollars will go. Uh, and if you didn't do a local government corporation and, and just had a development agreement between the city, the TERS and the developer, that agreement would have language in it. This is their, this is the way we structure specifically what we're structuring, is that, uh, the language says, developer, we're, we're saying we're going to, we're going to give you all of this in reimbursement, you've got to build it. You've got to make the taxes come into the pot. And that pot alone is the only pot that you can turn to, to get paid for this list of things. So if you don't fill it, you can't come and say, hey, how about the general fund or how about, how about the emergency service district fund or, or enterprise? None of that is eligible. It's all points to the TERS fund. Now, if you do a local government corporation, as we've suggested, the only difference is that the city sends the money from that pot to the LGC and then the LGC has the same deal, it has its own pot. And the agreement would say, that's the only place that you can go to to get paid. So if, if, if there, if for whatever reason, money starts to flow and they get some money and then they, and then it fails, that's it. They have to eat everything that they've done. Uh, and I've seen, I've seen that happen on occasion. It, it doesn't, it doesn't happen frequently, but because it's, it's typically one of the things that, that we try to test in, in establishing financial wherewithal. You know, when a developer comes in and says, you know, we want one of these things or we want one of those things. You don't want to go through all the brain damage of spending time and wasting people's time to set up a tool if it's not going to work.
Sure.
And so, you know, there's, uh, you know, there's more than ample information that, you know, that could be made available to demonstrate the financial wherewithal and where the dollars come from. If you want to see it, uh, um, but the, uh, bottom line is that, and again, that goes to the, the, the use of the, the phrase. Because it is what it is, if the developer does everything he says he or she's going to do, then it works. If they don't, then there isn't any lot of ability for the process. But there's a lot of upside when it does work because you get benefit of the dollars. But there's a lot of upside when it does work, because you get benefit of the dollars that are ongoing.
Okay, thank you.
Can you talk to me a little bit about that, that 50% threshold and how that impacts future annexation actions? It doesn't necessarily impact future annexations. It just, it impacts future ability to reinvest it though.
Yes, exactly. But that doesn't mean that you can't do it a different way. Okay, let me give you an example. I had, I had to come up with a means to do this for a developer client in Fort Bend County, whose land was completely outside of a city ETJ. They were in the county, but there was no city around. They were also in the mud. They were getting mud benefits, but he had just under $40 million worth of roads and utilities that he needs to finance. Uh, or reimbursement, that was his, that was his desire. We cut a deal with the mud that covered about 10 of them. So there was a $30 million left. And the only way that we could do that was to use increment financing concept, but do it without a zone. And so what I did is I went to the county and I asked the county commissioner and their, and their legal counsel to consider using 381. So you could do it with 380, where basically you define a capture area. And you say, okay, and you do it the same way you do with yours. You take the snapshot of what the base value was, you set your threshold there. And then, and then by agreement, you say, everything that you do there, whatever taxes come out of there, we're going to give you X percent. And that's the way we did it. And so it's, for all intents and purposes, it's true, but it's the same thing. Cause there really isn't a boundary, but it works the same way. And, uh, in that instance, because it was outside the city, it was just a county deal. And, uh, but you know, if, if you talk to the Fort Bend auditor and Fort Bend budget office and all that, they call it TERS because they have to, they have to treat it the same way as how they do their numbers. So I mean, effectively, also, you can't use the chapter 311, but using 380 powers, you still have a capacity to do the same kind of deal, just do.
The scope of the TERS, the preliminary plan include other utility projects? So the city has a need for a wastewater utility project, uh, could be used on sewer system projects. You guys are supplying a boatload of power. Would the city be able to develop its own electric distribution network to leverage the, the power plant for all its purposes and create an electric, a city on electric utility? Could it be able to assist us with utility on, uh, water infrastructure? Could we beef up the TERS to include other utility projects?
The answer to that is yes. You can put projects in the plan. At whatever point in time, uh, you can establish, uh, the financial liability. Right now it's, there, there isn't much room.
Right.
But if, if the numbers as, as computed play out as, as I'm hoping, as I'm expecting they will, they're a lot more conservative and you get a lot more juice, a lot more money. That surplus availability is going to be very apparent. Um, and, and at that point in time, uh, you could amend the plan and add utility infrastructure to it. And, and you get to the point where the TERS basically is played out, it's paid for its stuff. Uh, you have the option of keeping it alive and putting in other additional municipal projects. You know, the, the 20 that I mentioned in Houston, the, and I left, we had increased it by 19 years. Of the original 20 that, that were there when I left, I believe 70% of them have been amended at least once. I know a couple multiple times, because when you've got a partnership with the other jurisdiction, it's dual money coming in. As long as the, the county is willing to play, that's, this tool is the only way you're going to get county money paid for city stuff.
Right.
And so, yes, there, there are ways to, to, to use this tool going forward that will continue to be a benefit above and beyond what it is.
The, uh, project timelines, the, the start date, I know you mentioned kind of five years, um, to go. The plan, the schedule, um, starts in 2023. So could you just elaborate on, on the, the perceived delta between five years and returning revenue? Or maybe that's just for financing, maybe I've misunderstood. The difference between 2023 and then when funds will actually start hitting a general fund account? So I, because before you said, oh, it's going to take some time. You want to put, put things in the field. By the time it shows up on the appraisal report, then it shows up in next year's taxes. And before next year's taxes are due, it's a two or three year lag. And there's also probably some other, some other lag. I was just wondering how, how that all catches up in, when the spreadsheet starts at 2023?
Certainly. Um, there is, uh, I'm expecting, um, by year three.
Yeah.
Actually, in year two, you'll, in all likelihood, you'll see some money. Um, it's looking like, uh, and again,
Get the close.
Rob, Robert, if, if we start, um, property acquisition, we're not actually starting construction until the latter part of '24, correct?
Okay. So we plan on starting, we plan on starting, uh, construction, uh, once we have Exodus 1 energized or, or, um, basically it's been ready to produce power. That's going to be December 2024. We'll, we'll start, we'll start civil construction in December, meaning the last, the last quarter of December 2024. Actual construction will take place from April, May of 2025.
2025.
Would we, would the city, under this agreement, are we going to be able to effect annexation prior to Exodus 1?
That is, uh, that is our plan. You know, the, the goal for us, uh, if, if, if the city consents to, to partner with us, as soon as we, as soon as we, we begin the timeline on creation, uh, we're going to dual track the issue of getting in. Because again, it, the, without, without the city able to participate, there is, there is little advantage to this tool.
Cause I think, Robert, you, you started working on, on these Exodus projects two, two years ago, I think there's, is probably when I, when we first met, maybe a year and a half. And it's going to be about two years by the time that you, you close on that land deal alone. Um, and at that point, you still don't have an agreement with the county and you have to develop, develop agreement with the county. It's, it seems as if we're, if we're lagging behind Exodus 1, we're going to be waiting a long time. It, it, given the simplicity and, and the agreement potentially with Martindale, would, would we get everything set and just stare at dirt for a few years while Exodus 1 comes online? Or, or would you entertain the option of going with Exodus 2 if Exodus 1's still languishing on agreements?
Also, um, on our, on our end, so we plan on, so we've started planning process for Exodus as of last month. Exodus 2 as of last month. We, we have a, we have a milestone called notice to proceed. Um, basically, um, let's establish our, our construction date, um, to move forward. Um, our notice to proceed for Exodus to construction for Exodus, Exodus 2 is actually February of 2024. So, you know, we can begin construction as early as March of 2024. Um, there's some additional items that we need to cover as time moves on. You know, um, I would not compare it into the, um, I would not compare Exodus 1, Exodus 2. Um, as far as, uh, as far as the development, uh, development accuracy and whatnot. There's different partnerships. There's different financial resources for Exodus 2 to make the process more efficient than what we experience in Exodus, you know? We're fighting over land. Basically, um, you have to, you basically have to change the entire site of Exodus 1. You know, based upon some of the land being acquired by a secondary group. So, you know, that put us behind potentially nine months. The case of Exodus, um, 2 and 3, that is not going to be the case at all. We've already started plan, preliminary planning. Our environmental studies have already started. And all additional, um, additional studies by general engineering designs and whatnot. Uh, we predict nine months to get to that point where we're ready to begin construction, if not earlier.
At what, at what point are you acquiring and closing on the land?
We will, we will close on the land as of, no X and B's. Land will be closed on February, March 2024, February or March 2024. We hit notice to proceed. We, we are mandated to acquire the land.
So how, are you foreseeing getting the current property owner to consent or petition for annexation prior to that point?
Yes, most definitely.
Yeah, they're, they're agreeing to, they're agreeing to that.
Yeah, we, we, we've had discussions with them and with their, their, their engine.
Okay. So what you're saying, if all the stars align, possibly the city could be, could be receiving revenue in '28?
'26.
That quick, '26? You said two, you say 20, 26, quick?
Yeah, because we'll, we'll have, we'll have, uh, construction beginning in '24. That valuation will come along the line in '25.
Yeah.
The dollars will come in '26.
So I'll, I'll just say two or three, but it'll be that quick?
Yeah, yeah. And, and not only that, but once that bus has closed, it's going to be exponential the next year.
Once you get started.
Yeah, I'm expecting that there will be an excess of $2 million by the second year of revenue.
Second year being 27?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to move a little bit.
Jared, like we're, we're going to be discussing and saying yay or nay. Like this, we're already discussing stuff and they don't even have the land. You know what I mean? It's like, yeah, they do have plans, but they don't even, they don't even have the, the land yet. Or they don't even have the, the easement to even.
My next question is, I don't think the city needs a petition to create this, but it might be something the city requests is us consent by the current property owner for the creation of a TERS over the property. Instead of a prospect. So, um, that's probably something we'd want to do prior to, to creation. At least, at least, so, so we know they're on board. They know what the, with the preliminary plan is. They know what the TERS is going to, going to likely do. A preliminary plan is going to go to the TERS board once it's created. TERS board is going to take a lot of action. And that person whose land this is all happening on doesn't know what, is it involved in a way that they're making representations to the city as, yes, we are involved and yes, we concur? It just seems like a, a recipe for weird things to happen later, to say at least.
I don't, I don't think there would be any issue with getting.
That's, that's probably, that's probably true.
And, and actually, I mean, that's part of the, the reason for the procurement process. Because at that point in time, people, you know, people that might be impacted have an opportunity to weigh in. But if you've, you know, since you've flagged it, we can, we can make that happen. At, at the end of the day, there's, you know, the city creates the reinvestment zone. Property owners, uh, any property owner inside of reinvestment zone is paying taxes already. It's to the extent that there's no increase in value attributed development, that tax burden doesn't change.
And I, I'm curious what happens when the land use goes from being classified agricultural to being reclassified as industrial? And now they, that agricultural land has to pay back taxes on the change of, of the use?
That wouldn't happen until, until construction.
Until construction begins, okay.
And that's, that's something that appraisal districts files would also have to mirror. And right now it's ag. And it'll stay ag until we start working.
And, and so when we go to preliminary plan, TERS board reviews preliminary plan, suggests a final, city council approves a final plan. Along with that, attached with that is a development agreement. That development agreement is with the landowner. And so I, I see that as another.
You know, the development agreement, if the development is green, agreement is with the person making the capital investment, not with the landlord.
If development agreement, well, I guess that's true. It'd be on your risk then. If we, if we, if we have a contract with the, with the capital investor of saying, you will annex your land on no later than February 2024. In order to make that contract happen, you either have to buy that land and now you're contractually obligated to buy that land and make it happen, or you have to convince the property owner to do it on your behalf if for some reason that land acquisition fails.
It would, it would, it would be not, not enforceable. Because you, you can't, you, you can't enter into a contract over business interest that doesn't involve the third party landowner and enforce it. I mean, it would, it, it, I mean, there could be a stipulation.
Unless they would, they would be responsible for damages.
What, there would have to be stipulation, I mean, because what would the damages be in, in that case? I mean, you, you could build in the liquidated damages provision, but generally what you're looking at is a no harm, no foul. Because, because then the response would be, yeah, well, you, you didn't have any, any loss, so you didn't suffer any damages. So you spent time and energy doing it, but you didn't lose out on anything that you didn't otherwise have, so.
And then that's expectation of future, uh, development and revenue for that.
I, I, both speculative. Proving, proving future business damages in Texas for a business that doesn't exist is nearly impossible.
Makes sense.
Case law codes that out. So essentially you would have this contract that goes, because if, if you and I contract for you to buy Mr. Carter's land, we, we can't do that. I mean, he, he has to agree to sell it.
So, so that, so at that point, the development agreements, poof, it paused. And so it wouldn't make a lot of sense to enter a development agreement until that point. And then we started going backwards. I go, at which, at which point does it make sense to go into the TERS?
So is it, is it the chicken or the egg? Right, because being, that, that's where we are. And, and I mean, quite frankly, the, the question is, if the city doesn't consent to this, this project, are we going to move forward? If the city says, sorry, no deal, does it move forward? And if the answer is no, then, I mean, there's your answer and so.
I mean, financially, the economics are challenged, are really, really challenged.
Yeah.
And that's part of the reason why, frankly, we're starting early. Because we've got, in addition to the grant stuff that we were also pursuing simultaneously, uh, the, uh, lenders are also looking to solidify, uh, reimbursement potential for the capital they're going to put in. They know that there's a pledgeable source of revenue that's forthcoming and assignable to them. They're going to be a lot more comfortable. And so there's, you know, there's a coupling together of this that is just part and parcel of, of, of the push uh, based on, uh, taking advantage of the time that you have now to do the 1 or 2. But you know, the issue of, of owner consent, that's, it's really not a problem. They're very interested in, in, uh, the, what, what has been negotiated in terms of divesting for the, for the, for their sake. Cause there's, there's a lot of money on, on the table for them. Uh, they're well aware of what it is, what they're, they're positive to do the thing right now. Uh, and they know that we're seeking government support.
And so I think if, if the city were to create the TERS, it's all really preliminary to a point until they acquire the land. And that's, that's when I think things really happen.
Hey, I've got a question, kind of alter subject a little bit. We had a developer come in about a month or so ago. And he was talking about annexing, uh, you know, he could have a property on, they'd say, your same situation. You'd have another property to, to, to border up to, to be annexed into the city. Have you ever heard about using a power line easement as a way to?
To connect?
To connect. Have you ever heard of that? He was, he, he was a mud, he was a mud lawyer and he mentioned that. I've never heard of anything like that.
Never seen that, no.
Okay.
Um, that, 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 that's not to say that maybe it's, it's.
I think he did it, it was in Houston. He did it in Houston. I, I was just picking your brain on that one. I think he did it, it was in Houston, he did it in Houston, but I was just picking your brain on that one.
But I've never seen that. Now, conceivably, if if, you know, access easement agreements. I've I've seen them used for a lot of things and we've used them in in fact to 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 provide for the capacity legally legally to reimburse things that otherwise are in the public right of way. And we did it primarily so that we could make sure that it was beautiful on the commercial portal. And the agreements that we approved basically were, you know, five feet wide, beaten on kind of agreements. We didn't own anything, or we set it up where the developer didn't own it because it was city easement. But by virtue of the fact that there was an agreement to allow his use, what he improved, we were able to reimburse.
Because, you know, that's a blue bond and agreement or L C R A, excuse me, L C R A agreement, what, one hundred and twenty foot wide easement under power line? I was just just asking your.
Yeah, there's probably got to be some kind of public use settlement or something like that. I'm not prepared to be legal, but I've never done one.
Thank you, thanks. Thanks.
Any more questions?
Um, Jared, on page ten of the where it's the zone duration. And that and it says the zone as proposed would terminate on December thirty first twenty fifty three. But, you know, like he was saying that the city would just, it would be terminated and then the city would then get a hundred percent. Is that what he said?
Yeah.
And that's what.
And when the when the when the TERS goes away, then there's no reinvestment kickback.
Yeah, the statute, the statute requires that when a city approved the zone, that the creation ordinance specify term. And so you've got to put date, start date, end date by statute. And and so it's it's everyone crystal balling, how long is this going to take and what's logical as a timeframe? But the statute also says when the project plan is fulfilled and everything has been built and paid, unless the city elects to keep it, it it dies by operational.
By by virtue of the increment reinvestment, this the city, if the city were to do no increment reinvestment and were to otherwise provide a hundred and thirty four million dollars of capital into the project as a corporate partner. You know, would there would there'd obviously be some stake in in the incomes and and value of of the project at that point? Would there be ever a consideration, given the substantial value that we're paying, that we're basically paying into the project of a ownership stake in the project by being paid for by that TERS? So if we're we're paying a hundred and thirty four million dollars over thirty years for something, would something include a ownership stake? Let's say the project's worth one point seven billion dollars and we're paying and we're paying a hundred and thirty four million of of that value. What is that, less than, a little less than ten percent? Could the city have a a five percent ownership ownership stake in the project because of the value that's being returned?
I've never seen that. Robert, that's that's really a GCI question. Did you understand what where he's going with that?
Can you repeat that again one more time?
So.
Can they can they get a piece of the pie?
There you go. Yeah, if 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 we're basically, if if we're shark taking this thing.
Only if it's apple.
Laughing, you can see the big smile.
If we're if we're if we're shark taking this thing, you're going to have the one guy says, I'll give you a loan. And the other guy says, I'll buy some equity in your stock of of your company.
Robert, if we sit down at the table and try together, I'm going to eat more pie than you.
Well, watch this. So we're doing better, we're doing better on this on this side. So I'm willing to go into, based on the power purchase agreement, no, C I is more than willing to to create a type of fund or economic development type fund, mainly with the city in order to in order to designate a certain small percentage, which will be tremendous to the city on an annual basis. I can openly say, based on our partnership, my my partners, some of our financial, financial partners that are working with us, that is definitely an option we can discuss.
Yeah, some some something to look into.
We had.
Yes.
It might sound incredibly self-serving, but Robert and I have had multiple conversations, not only about here, but about you and primarily because you and so broke, about how we can flow dollars to help the city.
Yes.
So and and it's not out of realm of possibility, but it wouldn't be like a percent of profit kind of thing. It would have to be a different kind of arrangement where there would be funding made available.
I I always.
Used at the city's.
I was thinking as far as becoming part of the ownership interest in the project.
Yeah, I don't think that's within the possibility because it's financed.
Well, I got a question, say, say thirty years, it's dissolved and that through through two thousand acres. We're in the, we're in this, it's in the city limits, so they they sell it and they build a bunch of homes. That subdivision would be in our city limits at that time.
Yes.
That'd be firm.
Yes.
So thirty years from now, folds, goes away, they sell the property, instead they develop, it's our city limits.
Yes. Yeah, anything that would happen, if it's not a continuation sold on, would remain in the city.
Okay.
And you benefit from it. So.
It would be automatic, even even with that, it'd be automatic, they'd be.
Yeah, yeah.
Locked into the city.
Once we, once we petition in, it's in.
Even even with this.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what use.
So once y'all, once y'all sell the property, that'd have to be, that'd be in the city limits.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
One final thing for me, and then I think I'm done. So then here at this point, like, say, just say, like, if it it's if it's not successful, if there's some development stuff, if the pot is like already depleted because of developments that's going on and if there's not a balance to continue funding, where is where does that money come from?
If there's no money going in, there's no money going out and the project just dies and they walk away from it.
And the city won't have any liability on the the tiers, nothing?
Because everything that gets built out there is going to get built on. City is not obligated to spend. And any taxes that result from that development, once we're in the city, are going to be paid by us to the city. And so it's it's, you know, the the proposal for the tourist basically says, we'll pay you, but, you know, we turn half of that so that we can mitigate our capital costs. And make it a win win for both of us. And once, once those, once those costs are set forth in a project planner pay, then it's it's done unless you guys decide to to extend. But, yeah, the the, again, the the comment about it being performance based really is something that that not only is an advantage to the city, in fact, there is no exposure as far as having to spend money, but the at the end of the day, because it's all on us to perform. There isn't, there isn't any, there shouldn't be any fear that there's going to be a cost that comes back to you. If we were, for example, if we were building a residential subdivision and we had, you know, a bunch of infrastructure that needed to be maintained and things like that, and we didn't do the development, that would be another story. But that's not what we're asking for. We're we're essentially asking for using three eighty to pay for component parts of the farm as a percentage of the overall investment.
My 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 point is, if we're buying for it, why don't we own it?
I know. But but what's also, you know, the flip side to that is that, you know, the partnership is going to render a tremendous financial windfall to the city. That wouldn't otherwise occur. For that reason, we're we're hopeful that that you guys will. If the next step were to be on your agenda to essentially give the staff permission to post the notice for the hearing. And I guess we'll do that first week in July, maybe.
Yeah.
Or talk about it.
On the sixth.
Yeah, please help us.
Okay, so thank you very much.
Thanks for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
I hope I hope we didn't.
No, that's fine, it was very informative, thank you.
And can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn at seven thirty three.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor, please say hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay, Carrie's.
Thank you, Robert, thank you for joining us.
It's only seven thirty one. We have to sit for two minutes.
Thank you, everyone, it was a pleasure.